All right, it is five o'clock PM. Those wishing to address the board during the public comment agenda item 4.02 must turn in a public comment form before the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. I know we have one coming in right now. That's okay. Any form submitted after the session has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, June 24, 2024. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are myself, Vice President Campbell. I will be conducting the meeting this evening as President Bumpus will not be in attendance at the meeting. Director Barnes, Director Whitfield, Director Etskorn is also absent, I believe, or on his way. There could be traffic. Superintendent Sean Woodward, Student Representatives Laura Wittenberg and Sophia Willett is not in attendance tonight. District Leadership Team, School District Staff, as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log on into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We're happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear that the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues and ask appropriate questions and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 5:00 PM. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Moving on to agenda item 4.02, we have no changes to this evening's agenda. And item 2.05, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda dated June 24, 2024?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approves the agenda dated June 24, 2024.
So a second. Second. All right, there is a motion and a second to approve the agenda dated June 24, 2024. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, and with Director Etskorn here, motion passes four to zero. All right. Moving on to agenda item, Section 3, Presentations, Agenda Item 3.01, Recognition of Senior Student Representative. I wonder who we could be talking about? Well, I'd like to recognize Ms. Laura Wittenberg, our Senior Student Representative, who is now a Monroe School District graduate. Everybody come on. Laura has served as Student Representative on the school board for the last two years, and tonight, we would like to thank her for her service at her last board meeting. Laura, would you come up for, or shake your hands? And we'd love to just congratulate you as you finish. All right. We'll take a photo with Laura at the end of the meeting as well. And now that Laura's graduated, Sophia Willett, who has been our Junior Student Representative, will move up into the Senior Position. That said, it creates a vacancy. And that is our agenda item 3.02, the introduction of a new student representative. And we have selected a new student to serve as the incoming Junior Student Representative, and we'd like to introduce him tonight. Myron Robinson, will you please stand up? All right. Byron was one of the 10 incoming juniors who applied for this position. He is a Monroe High School student and has served as the Vice President of the Black Student Union at Monroe High School. We are very excited about Myron's passion for building community and his natural leadership skills. Welcome, Myron. We look forward to working with you. Awesome. So tonight, Myron, you get to kind of see how things function in here and get the lay of the land, and then we will do an official swearing in like we do for all of the school board members as we, in September. And so Holly will get you those dates. And as we have our student representatives, it is summer. Sophia Willett is here in the house tonight. So good to see you guys. That being said, we can move on to agenda item 4.01. Let's hear from our student representatives. Laura, because you are on your way out, we'll let you speak first. I would love to hear from you and your reflections as a student representative for the last two years.
Okay. Do you believe it's my last board meeting? Um, thank you all. Um, I don't have a lot to say about what's going on at Sky Valley, because Sky Valley hasn't been in session for a couple of weeks. But I would just like to say that I've learned so much in this position, and it's been such a, like, good opportunity for me. But I think the biggest thing that I've learned is that a lot of people see the board members or just like people at the school district in general as almost like a character. And I think it's just so important that people see them as humans, because that's what they are. Everyone just trying to do their best, you know? Um, but yeah, thank you all so much for the last two years. It's been an honor to serve on the board.
Thank you, Laura, for being a good partner, always going first before me. So, and then, uh, school's been out, but the last day of school was good, and we had the Moving Up Assembly, and she was always really sad, and everybody always cries. And then we had Serpentine after, which was even more sad. Um, and then I went to graduation, which was fun. And there's a couple of backflips on the stages, which I'm surprised you guys let that happen. I was like, oh, my gosh. And then all the seniors painted their parking spots on the last day of school, which is really fun, and I'm glad that got approved, because that's been really fun.
Do you guys have any questions? This is it. This is your last chance with Laura.
Okay, summer plans. What's, what's one fun thing that you have planned for this summer?
Um, I'm going to Canada in, at the end of August, and then I'm going to Long, in a couple of weekend, or for the weekend, a couple of weekends. Should be fun.
Um, I go to California on like two weeks for camping, and then I get to go to New York in August, which I'm really excited about, because it's been like my dream place to go to.
Laura, when we started this year, you were very excited about a certain class, about changing someone's mind, or how to learn, how to, something about someone's mind, how did that class go? And kind of fill us in.
It was called Dr. Mind Control. Um, and it was actually a really good class. I took it mostly because my favorite teacher was teaching it. But, um, we just learned, like, techniques that, like, how the media kind of sometimes strews things, or like, trying to remember, like, how to exactly that it was about. But, um, my teacher is probably just shaking his head. We, yeah, we learned a lot, some about, like, yeah, it was kind of a history and social studies mixed class, like how the media did different things in history.
Laura, what are your plans in the fall?
Um, well, I've been working at the same job since I was like 15, and I've always really liked it, so I'll just keep working there. So I started full-time, I think, two weeks ago, whatever week, like, right after I graduated. I've been working like the maximum amount of hours I'm legally allowed to work. So then I started full-time, like, right when I graduated, and it's been really fun.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. Sophia, I have a question for you. Do you get to paint your own parking spot when you are a senior in the fall?
Yes, I do. I, so some kids do theirs right when school ended, and then some will do those in August. Some of them do mine in August, and I think I'm going to try to paint my pug. But I think it's going to be a lot harder than I think, but I still really want to do it.
Very cool. So ladies, Laura, as you are leaving, and Sophia, you're moving up. We have Myron in the audience, our new student representative for junior. What is one piece of advice you would give him as he's prepping to say, all right, this is a new thing I'm doing, a new chapter? What is one thing that you guys have learned after being in this role for two and one years that you would say to him as he prepares for that?
Um, I think it's important to, like, remember that you, you're serving on the board, but also, like, don't just, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, sorry. Like, you are serving on the board, so you are part of the board, but also, just, it's coming from your perspective. So don't try to do what they, like, don't just try to say, like, what everyone kind of thinks. I don't, I don't know how to say, but say it, like, what's from your perspective, kind of.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
No, sure, the student, that's really good. Share the student perspective, because that's exactly why we have students on the board.
Yeah, but also, like, from your, like, since there's going to be two representatives from the Monroe High School this, next year. So instead of just saying, like, oh, this is what's happening, and then say, like, what you, nevermind.
I agree with Laura. I feel like you just have to say what you're actually thinking, and don't just say, like, I guess what you think people are going to want to hear, and like, what's formal, and kind of just share your true opinion. Um, you're very, I love having Myron on the track team, so I'm very excited. It is, and I just hope you keep your, your funness in it, and don't get too, like, strict with yourself, I guess. Just stay positive.
Awesome. I think one thing that both of you ladies have done so well, and that you kind of end with, with sharing the student voice and student opinion isn't just, um, what you ladies have done really well is you haven't just shared your opinions. What you've done is you've actually, like, been in conversation with other students at the high school, and so you're not just sharing, well, what you think, but you actually shared what you hear other students saying as well. And that's a huge thing, because it's not just about, hey, I'm up here to just represent myself, I'm up here to represent student voice. And that's a huge thing for us, as we are voting on things to, like, we have, for example, tonight, we have the cellphone policy thing in here, like, that, there's a lot of big feelings around that, both ways, between parents and staff and students. And so to have that voice in there as well, apart from all the other services that we do, to just be able to speak frankly, has been super huge for us, and we really appreciate you guys. And sometimes that's being bold, and it's a little scary, and I really appreciate you guys have done that, so thank you guys for doing that. Ready to move on? All right, here we go. We're going to move on to agenda item 4.02, Public Comments. Public comment forms received after the meeting has started will be saved for the following meeting. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is the policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among district employees, parents, and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit the comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, or any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate the individual statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class, or exceeds the time limit. As board president or vice president for myself, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join the panelists in loud and unmute your video. So we have one comment tonight, and I know it was written kind of quickly. I'm sorry, I can't read the name on there. What does it say? Anita Trombley. Anita, can you come on up to the microphone? And, and you can address the board. The microphone is right over here, yep. And Anita, if you can just state your name into the microphone for the record and your relationship to the Monroe School District.
Anita Trombley, mother of children in the Monroe School District.
Okay.
I'm actually the parent of two boys in the transition program. It was their final year in the transition program until the new law passed that they could stay in school until they're 22, which gives me until December. Even though Riverview School District has decided any two-year-old kids get to do the entire school year next year, so apparently we're lagging behind some of the neighborhood schools. But what I'm here to talk about today is the fact that my IEPs weren't followed last year. The transition program was very short-staffed. I made the superintendent aware of that in January. I offered to volunteer in the transition program, as I have been cleared with the district to volunteer, and I have volunteered for different sports. I've talked to the head of the special services about the fact that my kids' IEPs weren't being followed. So I'm kind of lucky that they're going to get, like, three more months of school, but I'm here to complain about the fact that the transition program is very short-staffed. These kids are in their final years of school. Most of them have some type of developmental delay or issue. We apply for services through the state. That took me nine months to get that for my boys. As I go through the DDA system and the DVR system, those two are lagging months behind. So I'm really here out of concern, not just for my boys next year, because you're going to have 20 kids in the program. This year, you had like 12 or 13, and you didn't have enough staff for the 12 or 13 kids. So I'm wondering why I wasn't allowed to volunteer, since I've been, you know, active volunteering ever since my kids were in preschool. I volunteered with the track team and cross-country. So, um, I've had background checks done by the district, by the state. I guess I'm wondering, why does the district leave the transition kids so short-staffed? And I guess you guys can get back to me later, but that's all I want to talk about, is the fact that I've brought this to the attention of everybody I can think of. Now I need to continue to bring it to the attention to the school board, and I'm happy to come to every meeting. I almost ran for the school board back when my boys were in third grade. And I really feel that you guys should give the kids in this program an opportunity to learn the job skills that they're going to need for the rest of their life, because they're not getting that right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. All right, that is the last of our one public comment. We will now move on to agenda item 5.01. CTE AP Psychology Curriculum Adoption. This is our first reading, so it's just for information and discussion. We won't be taking any action tonight. And thank you guys for coming on up. We have Shannon Tarek, our Director of College and Career Resources up here as well, and we'll have our, this is from our representation of our Instructional Materials Committee. Again, this is the first reading of replacement core instructional materials for the AP Psychology and Core Plus Aerospace courses at Monroe High School. These materials both replace the outdated resources and are suggested materials from both OSPI and AP College Board. Shannon, you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you. And we have just a very brief slide deck to kind of walk through also. So you can move past that slide. So we have two pieces of curriculum actually for CTE tonight. The first one is for our AP Psychology class. The, if we're able to click on the link, you can jump to the text itself and kind of get a preview. And, yep, there it is. And the reason for this update, this is an update to existing curriculum. Our current text is over 10 years old, and AP College Board requires that we have a book newer than that. And also, the, the course, the AP course description and exam have changed, and this is the recommended curriculum that they now have for the course. So this is the, the one that we took to IMC a few months, maybe a month ago. And this was recommended by IMC to move forward with, so we're here with that. Cost and all of that, if we can go back to the slide deck. That's just saying why we're moving to it, but, um, cost and all of that comes from CTE, because it is a CTE course. So, um, and I do have copies of the text available if you guys want to review it before the next read. And I know that Director Whitfield was obviously at IMC when we talked about it as well. So, um, and then the second piece of curriculum we have is for our Core Plus Aerospace Program, and it is called Fusion 360 Master Cam. It is a software, so it is not an actual text. The link that is provided there is, you can go to that and see it just in a moment, but it, it's free, so it doesn't actually have a cost, but it replaces the, the core content, and it's what OSPI Core Plus part of CTE actually recommends. So it's also the industry standard that's for our CAD and 3D model machines that we, with our CNC tool requirements and compatibility. So it is something that our program's very excited to move forward. It would be replacing SolidWorks, which has been our program that we've used in Core Plus Aerospace previously. It, we will still use SolidWorks at the middle school level, but this would be at the high school for this class specifically. If you want to go, I can show the site real quick. So it's a pretty comprehensive software that you're able to kind of peek around. Brad Byer, our teacher, would be much more articulate about all the ins and outs of it, but I do know that it works and it's fancy. So, and it is the required curriculum. He was able to do a demonstration and kind of show what it would look like at our IMC meeting that we were able to present to as well. So it should allow kids to have, be able to use, access this outside of just our district computers. It's something that would be cloud-based, and it wouldn't be necessarily something that we have to download on an image. So it also helps our tech department a great deal, because they don't have to image all the computers with it. And I believe that's it for just kind of giving you the information. Those are the two pieces. Oh, if we go back to that one, sorry. If you click on each of those, that's just the, the information that was presented at IMC. So you can click and see all the documents. Oh, no, we can't. I don't have access. So, there we go. So it's just the materials and costs, and kind of runs through all of them. They're, these are kind of simple ones, because they are really the recommended curriculum from both OSPI and from the college board, so we don't have a ton of choice in what other direction we would go. And while the Autodesk Master Cam looks like it has a cost, it doesn't have a cost for our program. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
So the current SolidWorks does not meet the requirements?
No, it, because of what the Core Plus Aerospace Program at OSPI, what they're, well, it's not just aerospace, but what they're recommending has shifted to be Master Cam instead, because it has, it can be used on more machines, and it's not as costly, so their recommendation has changed.
Thank you.
Follow up on that. With our students who go to Snow Isle as well, are they using SolidWorks, or are they moving over to Master Cam as well?
They use both.
Okay.
And we will too. So our students who take CT classes in middle school that are in the same pathway, they will also use SolidWorks, and then when they get to high school, they'll transition to Master Cam. They, they speak to you, they speak similarly, so they are, the usability is actually supposed to be easier on Master Cam. But at Snow Isle, depending on the program that they're in, they may, they may use one or the other, or they might use both.
And this is, we just recently purchased new CNC machines, didn't we?
Correct.
And this is all compatible with our new machines?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had is moving back over to the AP curriculum. I was an AP teacher a long time ago, and so it's all changed since then, but I know that there were, when I went through the college board trainings, there were sometimes two or three curriculums that they would recommend. Is this the only curriculum that they're recommending?
The only one they're recommending.
All right, that was what I wanted to ask as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I want to ask a question unrelated to these two items, which I'm familiar with in the first place. With, this is just kind of a general question. With our goal of higher academic achievement, how does current and up-to-date curriculum have to do with increasing our test scores? Some of the subjects we also talked is that there's consistency between grades going from one to the other, the same format, the same concepts. Do you address that, Jennifer? We've, we've talked about it, and I'd like the board to get that perspective.
Absolutely. So, you know, one of the things that, like Shannon and I partner on is making sure that we're having coherence K-12 as we look at all of our adoptions, and trying to make sure that the materials that we're picking not only align to the current state standards, but that they also align to one another. So what we've been trying to do in the Instructional Materials Committee is when we have our calendar kind of rotating things every seven to 10 years, something comes up for adoption, we're trying to look at more of a program adoption, so making sure that whatever the materials are, that they're, I can use the latest math one that we did last year as an example. So we didn't change the elementary math materials, because we'd gone through a recent adoption, and it was aligned to the state standards. But then when we chose middle school and high school, we looked specifically to make sure they were things that were aligned to current, most effective, research-based best practices, and also that aligned well and kind of piggybacked on what was being taught at elementary. So although there are different materials, the instructional strategies, mathematical practice are the same. And so that's kind of been like our work, and even with this, is making sure that as our students are going through the K-12 system, and they're making choices, and they're moving into more career and technical education, that those are piggybacking on what they've already learned in their other coursework.
I would also add that as we look at things like the High School and Beyond Plan, and what we start with in, you know, very early ages with some of the STEM work, is we want to make sure that that, within the CTE pathway, as well as others, that it, there is alignment, that K-12 piece. And so as, as we're starting to, when we look at curriculum, we're also looking at course offerings, we're looking at what pathways and how that aligns to our labor market data of what our community needs are as far as jobs go. And then we, we use that as, I'm not going to buy curriculum for a class that we may not offer any longer, because we want it to make sure that it is relevant, and it is rigorous and important to what our kids need beyond high school, and that they're identifying within their own high school beyond pathway. So, whatever.
Does that answer you, Chuck?
This is more to the board. Being a part of the Instructional Material Committee, I've seen the, the need for more robust curriculum, and that we need to look at, make sure we have adequate funding to get the material, and then also to do the prep in terms of the professional development. All of that ties into teachers having the right tools, the right instruction, and that works its way down to the students learning the necessary skills and skills, skill levels to be successful. So it does work into that, and what are, and listen to the meetings, we just need to make sure we have money. That is, is a portion to it, and that should be a priority. That's my opinion, and then you guys, you guys need to communicate that as we go along, the importance of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So a couple of things that you guys said brought up a couple more questions. One, so Molly Shanks, who's our AP Psych teacher, is she going to the college board training this summer?
Yes.
Good. So we'll get the, she'll have her curriculum in time to get ready for next year.
Yeah, she's got a copy now. We won't have all of them ordered until probably, she's like, might be going in like next week, so they won't be here by then, but, but we have some sample copies that she's able to use, and she has been through the training previously as well.
Good. Because that one, you like literally plan every day, backwards plan from the test. And then it are, so that was one about professional development for her, and then for Mr. Barrett, he's, has he gone through the training as well with the new?
He has.
Not SolidWorks.
So Core Plus is a little bit different than the AP setup, so it's actually run, they have regular meetings throughout the year, and so he's been a part of that community since he was hired, and so he's been attending those every other week or so for a couple of years now. And so that's where, he's gone through the training as part of that already, and he's in true fashion, ready to run right now. So he keeps asking, when, when can we start?
Yeah. That sounds like him.
Yeah. So he's, he's on board and ready to roll.
That's good. I just want to make sure that we have the right tools for them, because what you brought up, Chuck, I want to make sure that, especially the college board training is super, super helpful, because you have other teachers there who have been doing it for a while with that curriculum, and there's a lot of questions that you need to ask. And then the last question, I guess, is for the AP Psych class. Will this align for a college and the high school curriculum to get credit at EBCC?
So it doesn't currently. We've been, so the college and the high school, yes, but because of CT class, sometimes they put it under dual credit, not college and high school. That's something that we haven't had in place in the past. It is something we've talked with Everett Community College about a couple of different times, and so this last year, they weren't open to having any new articulation agreements as they were having some transition in staff. And so I hope would be that we are able to move forward on that in the fall when they're back.
Okay. And that's something that we plan on having on the calendar to do. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was covering agenda item 5.01 and 5.02. And now Jennifer Murphy, it is your turn, the Open Science Ed Middle School Science Instructional Materials Adoption.
Yeah, this one will be a little bit longer because it's a core curriculum that all sixth, eighth grade students will have. This has been, um, a two-year process. So if you go to the next slide, Jesse, it kind of talks through like where we started. So our last middle school science adoption was in 2010. And our current materials are not aligned with the next generation science standards. So two years ago, Jonathan, Judy and Christie Hilson started working with a team of teachers and the Northwest ESD to go through a process of kind of determining what we should be looking at. And through that process, they began to research and review different materials. What was the different options out there? Brian Mcnevin from the ESD came down and met with them multiple times to look at different rubrics for how to look at the curriculum, how to make judgments about what was aligned to the standards and what wasn't, to look at the scope and sequence, and then to talk a lot about instructional strategies. So what does it mean to teach to the next generation science standard? And through that process, teachers began to pilot, um, the Open SciEd materials kind of, um, on a case-by-case basis. So some teachers got really passionate, wanted to jump in right away, like, I'll give it a try and I'll give you my feedback. Um, and then this year, um, each team kind of committed to doing at least two units. And there were a couple teams that did three units. And we worked with the ESD to like, uh, rent the science kits. And through that process, we were actually a year ahead of schedule. We were planning one more year for an official pilot to try out kind of more units. But we got to a place in February and the team of teachers at the table really just said, like, aren't, aren't we kind of just ready to move forward? Like, we all feel good. There's questions to be answered about implementation and we'll talk about that. But, um, the team really felt strongly that these were materials that they felt they could effectively use to meet the needs of students. The, on this slide, and we're, we don't have to watch it today, but the, is the mission vision and priorities that were established by the team. So this was their working document and you can click on that, Jesse. Um, and this is basically kind of talks about, um, when we're aligning, lining our thinking around high expectations, equitable access and powerful instruction, what is it that we want to see for middle school science? And then this was what they used to ground themselves as they researched and reviewed the different materials. And I just think that, you know, um, Jonathan and Christie did a fantastic job with their teacher leaders, really, um, exploring this. And it's become really a model for how we want to do our curriculum adoptions in the future. Um, so if we go back to the slide presentation, and, um, I think our second read is in July. So you, you all will have time to kind of go through it. But the videos that are embedded kind of give you the overview of the materials. And basically it's, it's going to require kids to interact differently and teachers to instruct differently. It's much more inquiry-based, uh, much more rigorous. Anecdotally, Jonathan had said this year, when he asked kids, like, what's your favorite class? They all said science. Um, in, in their classrooms where teachers were doing all the units, particularly at the beginning of the year, everybody was doing the first unit. Kids were really excited. They noticed a difference. And when you're in those classrooms, you'll see a lot of exploration. And I think, uh, according to Brian Mcnevin, who's our science expert at the ESD, it's one of only two really rigorous curricula that are available right now. And it is, um, a common creative common license. So what that means is that the materials are available online and the resources are free. It's not free though. Um, we have to, in order for our teachers to do it and do it well, they're going to require a lot of professional development. It's, it's a different way of thinking about how we teach. And they need time to process through what the materials are and, and time to, to learn how it's planned out, how it's mapped out, what the expectations are, how do you assess? So they'll go through a two-day launch, um, with the curriculum writers, um, through Open SciEd. And we are proposing to go through a publisher, Kendall Hunt. They're also our publisher for illustrative math. So, um, what they'll help us with is that professional development piece. They also will provide the kits. So that is also a purchase. We have to purchase the materials to teach the science. What we discovered with renting them from the ESD is renting's really hard. It's a lot of work to get everybody on the right pace and turn them in on time and get everything cleaned up. So it'd be a lot better to have the kits and then replace the consumables every year, which is a process that we've gone through normally. And so in this year, the plan is to give them two days of professional development where they will plan their first unit and teach their first unit. And then we will bring Brack, uh, Brian is planning to come back and work with them to talk through what were some of the challenges with implementing Open SciEd and that first unit, make plans for unit two and determine their next steps. We know, for example, kids in eighth grade will likely have some gaps. The scope and sequence is different. So teachers will need time to think about how to, we scaffold for those students and those gaps so that we make sure that they are ready to roll, um, if they hadn't had, for example, physical science prior to, um, this new implementation. So it is a slightly different scope and sequence. Um, and then we would hopefully, uh, teach at least three units this year, uh, more, um, as time permits and as teachers are able. And then the second year of implementation, we would do all of the units. Uh, we did choose not to buy the last unit. There are no essential learnings that are covered in that unit. And the teachers who had tried multiple units felt like, um, it wasn't, they weren't going to be able to get to that unit and that there was nothing in terms of the requirements of learning that students would be missing by not having that last unit.
The science course that we're doing this for, for middle school, is it currently a semester or a year-long class?
They're year-long courses. It'll be for sixth, seventh and eighth grade science.
Okay. And the two-day training, when does this, when would that start?
They're going to have that in September. We surveyed teachers and asked them if they would prefer to do it before the school year started or after the school year started. The dates that came back, I think were the 24th and 25th of September. So Jonathan and Christie will be working with the teachers in August to create, um, a plan for the Botman Life Skills Curriculum. That is generally how we start. That's, uh, taught in our science classes in middle school. So they'll start with that, which is a known material that they already have. And then by the time they're ready to launch the first unit, they'll have had the training and the planning.
How much time is available for them from that third week of September to when they would actually start the first unit of this? Just thinking of the time that they need to plan for that.
Yeah, Botman's, I think around, uh, I'm going to probably get it wrong, but I believe it's like five weeks. So between like the SEL and second step, um, some of the health curriculum and Botman, they should be able to get at least six weeks.
Okay.
Teaching routines and structures and scientific practice and how do you do scientific note-taking? And they can cover all of those pieces in that like first month, the six weeks, so that they're set up, ready to roll.
And then, um, in this adoption recommendation, um, you, you want us to look at the materials, which I appreciate. Are all the materials linked in the?
Yes, there's examples for sixth, seventh and eighth grade to lessons. Everything's, um, available online. All the links are embedded in here. If there's something that you're curious about that you don't see, that you want to see more of, just let me know. And I'm happy to, to go through it. This was the same information that was shared with IMC. So all of the materials that was shared with the committee is what we're sharing here. I don't have any hard copies. Uh, we will purchase, uh, teacher manuals for the teachers as part of the adoption. We sent those out to schools for them to look at, so I don't have them in front of me right now.
Sback has a science, uh, test in middle school, doesn't it?
Fifth, eighth and 11th grade.
And does this, does this meet the middle school?
Yes.
As well? That's what I want to make sure that they were.
Yeah. Um, it's unlike the current materials. This is really rigorously aligned. We have a team right now field testing the elementary. I'm not sure where, where that's going to go, but they're field testing Open Sided Elementary and they have really phenomenal things to say about it. Chuck's heard some updates on IMC. And then we also have Brian coming and looking, um, at it with our high school teachers, who are also going to be looking at some other materials as part of a K-12 adoption.
Okay. And is there a cost projections for what the cost would be for us?
Yeah, I think it's on one of the later slides. I believe it's a hundred and twenty thousand.
For all three grades for both schools?
Yep. It's, uh, the biggest cost is really the kits and the consumable materials. Once we purchase the kits, we will just replace what's consumable and we do that every year. So we do that now.
Any other questions?
So the, you said there was three teachers that piloted the program?
Almost all of them at least have taught two units.
Oh, all the teachers have taught?
Yes. It started with like a teacher or two of interest about two, two and a half years ago. But this year, every, every teacher agreed to do at least two units.
And how many units typically in a school year?
Um, I believe it's five units.
So typically five, and then did they receive training or instruction for those two units?
They hadn't. And typically when we do a pilot, sometimes we'll do a pilot training. But because they had worked with Brian Mcnevin, they really used his expertise to help them. They didn't have training with the curriculum writers, which is what we will give them for the launch. And that was suggested by both Brian, um, at the ESD and the curriculum developers.
So then, I mean, it sounds like we had a pretty good success. Yes, I'm asking, do we need these three separate training sessions?
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah, it really is a shift in our elementary, um, team that are field testing would tell you, they've spent four days, um, this first year and they're going to have another four days, um, this next summer. Training and it has been invaluable to them to have that training on these materials. It's just really such a shift in practice for them. And particularly for our, like, our elementary folks, I know it has been powerful because they're not all science experts. But even though our middle school team are content experts, it's still a big shift in practice when they're teaching the life sciences, the physical sciences and, uh, chemical science all at the same time. NGSS has things very integrated, whereas they've typically been taught more standalone previously.
Okay. And then back to the kits, uh, you mentioned that renting was kind of a pain.
Yes.
Did we rent for all teachers to do?
We did, yes. And Sheri did a fabulous job of working with, there's a, the ESD works out of the Marysville School District. And we basically, originally we thought we'll, we'll just pick it up, like, how much could it be? And then, um, Sybil here at HR had gone, she lives there, and gone to pick it up and realized, oh no, this is not going to fit in a car. And then we worked, um, we ended up working with the ESD and Marysville to have it delivered to us. And it came on like kind of big pallets. And so each of the units comes with all, it came with all of the materials. And then if you multiply that by the number of teachers teaching it, you can imagine we had a lot of stuff that then had to be dispersed to the schools and then picked back up and sent back out before we could get the replacements. So it was, and it's challenging because there are other districts that are also a part of that rental process. So we couldn't always get them when we needed them.
I see. And so the plan is to buy a copy or a unit or supplies for a unit for each classroom then, or classroom sharing these units?
No, um, they wouldn't be sharing them, um, materials simply because most of them are teaching at the same time. So it would be difficult to share.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, I see the total cost, Shannon pulled it up. It is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I remember this term, standards aligned. That's what I was getting to earlier. So this, the standards are aligned for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So are we ensuring that ninth grade, you know, the transition from, you know, middle school to high school, they're not starting at different, a different point, a different set of classes?
Yeah, we're, we're heavy into that, that work as well. Do you want to update a little bit?
So we, because some of our, um, science classes are equivalency CTE science classes. Jen and I have been partnering on this work for a while. And so for, um, this year, we started, we asked Brian Mcnevin to come back in from the ESD and he's meeting with, has met with our team leads for our science and CTE science, um, at the high school, knowing that the, that exact, um, concern is coming our way, um, at the, at the high school. So, and we've had those teachers kind of working with him on, on what is, um, what should we be looking at and how that's going to look. So he will also be meeting with the, all of our high school science teachers and CTE science teachers in the fall for, um, a few days and beginning kind of the journey that he did with middle school folks, um, with them this next year. So that will be happening additionally, um, we've cut, they've kind of already started doing the same dabble that, uh, it, how Open SciEd started at the middle school, at the high school level. The materials are not as robust at the high school level, uh, so with Open SciEd. So there's a few others that we're investigating and looking at and that Brian's going to help us kind of walk through what that might look like in Monroe School District and align to all of our work K-12 when it comes to science.
Shannon and I recently met with another school district who is in a similar situation. They've adopted Open SciEd Middle School. They have, um, a CTE and Gen Ed kind of pathway. Um, and we met with them to talk about the materials that they use at their high school. And we're kind of actually excited about it because some of it we already use. And so we're looking forward to seeing how, um, we can partner with that district. We're hoping to go see it in progress in September.
One thing from the committee that I was impressed with, I wasn't impressed in the past, uh, from where we started, but the, the implementation and the adoption process, uh, we had, uh, kind of pulled, pulled a quick move on the teachers previously and, uh, didn't have the proper way to implement it. Which is normal when you get involved with things that you see there's, things were a lot more complicated. I'm sure Superintendent Woodward had a, uh, a, a piece of that, getting that, helping you out. And, uh, among the various and multiple tasks that you have that, uh, that's coordinated with the rest of the school. And so I'm pleased to, pleased to see that approach implemented and now adopted.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty thousand for the initial cost. How many of, what percentage of that or a dollar amount is consumables that will need to be repeatedly purchased year after year?
That's a great question, Molly, and I'm not sure that I have that. Sheri is my budget expert and she's not here. So, um, I will find out and I'll get back to you.
And then, uh, the follow-up question to that is how are we budgeting for this? Where's this money coming from? Have we already, you know, kind of allocated it and set it aside? Or is this something that we're going to need to then look at the budget and come up with the dollar amount to continue to sustain this?
Yeah, so, uh, Brendan and I have been talking a lot about, uh, these kinds of topics. And let's see if Brenda, I got eye contact from Brenda. We are looking at in July and the first meeting in August, you adopt the budget, the second meeting in August. The good news is you have a really healthy fund balance. That is excellent. And, uh, these types of purchases, for the most part, are one-time purchases that you do every seven years or so. So the one-time costs, we have a great cushion for. It's the ongoing staffing costs that we're trying to get under control. So, uh, the, the short kind of long answer is yes, we're, we're, we're budgeting for, planning for it. Like Chuck has noticed, um, I've noticed the same, just through my conversations with folks in the district, that, uh, we, we definitely be in our best interest to speed this up a little bit as much as we can do and remain fiscally responsible.
Because I know that with, um, the math curriculum, illustrative math that we adopted, the, that has consumables with it as well. And so I know that we're paying for that, uh, year after year as our students go through it. So I just want to make sure that we're accounting for this and that we've got all of our ducks in a row budget-wise.
Yeah, you know, open educational resources are great because they're keeping up to date with the current standards and the current research. But the kind of gone are the days, it's less and less and less, um, happens less often, I would say. Where you have the AP Psych textbook, which they're not textbooks anymore. It's a lot of online resources and what we end up replacing every year are the consumables, which for math, it's workbooks, um, for science, it will be the things that they use to do the experiments. Um, and that is just part of the ongoing, the ongoing cost for materials. Um, and that is just part of the ongoing, the ongoing cost for materials.
Part of the modernization of curriculum is that it's moved to more online resources. So it's either more subscriptions, it's more consumables, it's. Sometimes you get lucky and you get a textbook, but um, but. That ages me a little bit.
And they used to like give us free things, you know, like you could get a free sample. We don't get a lot of free samples anymore, so.
It's a good business to be in subscription based. Jennifer, it could, would you be able to uh? Before we get into our next meeting, when we look at the, the second reading of this, would you be able to get us a cost breakdown on what the annual consumables? Roughly would be?
Yeah, we have it in a really unfriendly spreadsheet we got from the vendor, but I'll get it in a friendlier version for you.
And then if you can include in that as well, what kind of our ongoing P L C costs are going to be for training for staff? Because that'll give us a good idea of the whole. The whole thing we're about to bite off into of what that would cost. That'd be really helpful. Other questions? All right, no board action needed on any of these items because we're just discussing the first reading of those three different curriculums. Thank you ladies for that. That was super.
Thank you.
Yes, our next item is class fees. You have an attachment there as well on that. What our new items are. Um, and we have recommendation to make an action. So before we move into discussion on that, is there a motion to adopt the new class fee schedule?
I am moved that the Monroe School District Board of Directors adopt the new class fee schedule for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
Second, this, there's a motion a second to adopt the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school class fees. Is there a discussion on that?
A quick question, I guess, why, why are a lot of these fees disappearing or like eight, all the A P pieces?
Yeah, you bet. So um, which is, has been the norm in every district that I've been in that. Parents have voiced concerns about us charging for certain things. Uh, especially after passing a levy successfully and wondering, hey, what do our levy dollars go for, et cetera? A lot of questions like that. Um, I've also been in contact with our lawyer just discussing, hey. Is it, are there any concerns? Are there any gray areas when it comes to charging uh student fees, et cetera? And he gave us some advice for moving forward. The main change is that you'll see that we're recommending not to charge students for. Supplies for any class unless they leave the class with a, some marching band shoes or a T-shirt or. Or whatever that might be, or a personal project from an art class because it's actually something that belongs to them. They own it after the class. So you can see we'd still require again fees for art classes, A S B, athletics, uh proctoring fees for special exams. R O T C because that's primarily uniforms and uh personal equipment. Student parking banned and then the uh instrument rentals and cleaning fees would still be there. That would put us um right in line with uh Arlington High School's one example. One of our administrators did some research and, and found that we were a little bit out of line when it came to some comp districts. I can tell you that the same was in me. We kind of cleaned that up when I was there a- as well. So that does mean that I, I, it impacts Monroe High School's budget the most. Uh, because we still have to buy the, the supplies. The, the kind of the black hole that you get into from a legal perspective is. When you charge fees, but it's kind of nebulous. So for example, and I don't, I don't think anyone's doing anything wrong here. I just think. Over the years, laws have changed and thoughts about this has, but things like, hey, just general equipment. It's not something that we, we, we can even really. Do any longer. So anyhow, we um, we will uh be looking at, how does that impact the overall budget at Monroe High School? Brett and I had a great conversation. That he's gonna look at the wiggle room that he has, some of the accounts. Uh, have plenty of funds in, in the, in the uh contentary account. Some are negative balances, so. He's gonna work through cleaning that up and we'll determine uh what, what if any. Adjustments will we need to make at the district level. But right now, for next year, he's looking at through, add it through the building lens.
I, I like the fact that we're getting rid of a lot of these fees. When I went through high school, we didn't have a lot of this stuff and. Part of me feels like, you know, we shouldn't be nickel and diming, um, you know, students to. Come and take classes, right? I mean, there are some families who, you know, forty dollars for an A P Biology class. That, that's a lot and it's probably not in the budget. So I really like the fact that. Uh, we're getting rid of those and leveling the, the playing field on that, just making it accessible and available for every single student. So, yeah, I like it.
I think when you look at like the German and Spanish classes as well, like there's a workbook in there. Well, we just discussed workbook as a consumable for your math class. So then you take another class and. State requires that public education is free and open to anyone and everyone, and we have to provide that for people and we use the tax dollars to make it happen. And then. When you turn around and you charge people for that, that's kind of a double dip there, if you will, of saying, no, the tax dollars are there for us to provide those materials. If we choose this curriculum and it requires a textbook. That's not on the family's choice. So I think that for us to do that, I really like that we would clean that up and the idea that I really like the lawyers. Recommended language of, okay, if it's something they purchase and they walk away with that they have for themselves. That's their property, if you will, versus a textbook that you use up or a lab supply for doing an experiment. That I like that that gets a much clearer line. All right, there is a motion and a second, another discussion. Motion a second that we adopt the class fee schedule for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. On favor, raise your hand. All right, motion passes four two zero. Moving on to agenda item five point zero five. Consideration of revisions to policy thirty two forty five students and telecommunications devices.
All right, so we continue to work through this, this policy. The latest adjustment is specifically at the high school level and, and I'd sent you a, a note on the board update. The high school administrat- administrative team made a uh recommendation. They're requesting that. We focus on cell phones put away and not in use during classroom time only. Um, the, the language in this policy would state. High school students who choose to bring any uh P E Ds to school would only be able to use them during transition periods at lunch and before and after the school day. Uh, students are expected to silence their cell phones before entering a classroom. They were really worried about, you know, I, I did as y'all asked. Confer with our administrative team on this and. They really believe that couple of things, one. Students have time during the day. That's really their time, lunchtime, transition periods before and after school. Uh, much like we do here at, at work, we have breaks where we can access our phones, et cetera. And during that time, we might check in with our spouse, our kids or whatever, much like kids might check in with their parents. It's the world that, that we live in. I had a few people reach out to me, parents, and had mentioned the fact that. Their kids uh are employed outside of the school day here and there's certain jobs that they may, they may not find out until that day. If they have hours for them that evening and they're, you know, asking, how do we, how do we manage that? That's the one side of it. The other side is just the pure management of it and I trust our administrative team when they say. We don't think we can pull this off right now. So, so it's gonna be hard, a, a big enough lift. During the school day when kids are in class, because it's just part of. Walk, if you go to our high schools and walk through the classrooms, you can ask these two, phones are, for the most part, they're, they're out and available and that's gonna be a heavy lift by itself. They believe fully in us moving forward with that. I asked, do you think, you know, what about lunchtime? They're like, we don't think we can do it. So. The caveat would be, and this was true in the Peninsula School District as well. They started. Actually uh looser like this and then they tightened it up as they had success in the classrooms. And that's their ask. Um, start here, revisit in a couple of months, see where we're at, have a smaller dialogue at the board level. So. Um, I shared that I would uh, bring that ask forward. There's that piece and then I'd also. Uh, want to mention that. We've got, I've got some procedure because I, I know Chuck uh was wondering and the rest of you were as well. I've been kind of uh slow playing a little bit, not really slow playing it, just. Uh, struggling a bit with our administrative procedure on this and really want to get it right. So what do we do if students violate this policy? Uh, Chuck just asked for an example. This example that you have in front of you is our current policy three, two, four, five. Our procedure, I mean, and it really outlines in the first. Three pages that specifically outlines uh sexting and what is that and what do we do about that? You know, it's a criminal offense. The, the last. Page in the second to last page, the highlighted items show an example of. Uh, what about just basic violation of the policy? You're using your phone during class. This is Grandview School District's example. I, I made a few minor changes, but it's just, it's just one example of how. A school district has dealt with this and basically it's just. Uh, again, progressive disciplines. It might be first, first offense. Teacher has a conference with the student and gives the student a warning. Second, second offense might be. The phone is confiscated, teacher reaches out to parents and lets them know this was an issue, phone is given back at the end of the period. Third offense might be, all right, now you're gonna have to have a conference with the administrative team. We're also gonna confiscate your phone. Just during a class period and give it back. And then fourth could be anything like an in-school suspension, short-term suspension, uh, uh, et cetera. So just an example, as you requested Chuck, it's something that I'd like to. Keep working through this summer with the admin team though and. Uh, but it's, this is probably somewhere along the lines that we would, we would follow.
Yeah, that helps if I have uh conversations with somebody. At Safeway or at, you know, at Business or something, something of that effect. What, oh, I never noticed right there. School grounds. So. This was added for school buses. By the district. Uh, while students are on school grounds at school sponsored events or on school buses or vehicles provided by the district, students must buy, abide by the following. Rules related to P E Ds. Personal electronic devices. So that was, that was added also.
One question I have though, that I didn't have a lot of clarity from, from the board as a whole was. Because this is basically stating, hey, if you're using them on a bus, you still gotta follow these rules. What I don't think I was super clear on was, did you want to move forward? With not being able to use them at all on buses. Keeping in mind that. We have students going to athletic events. We have kids on the bus for long periods of time that. Legitimately are doing homework on the bus and required readings, et cetera. I've mentioned that a little bit at the last meeting and I, I don't feel like I got the direction on that, that, you know, from the board as a whole. So I. That's not currently in this iteration of the policy.
I talked to Mike Birch uh at the transitions graduation and I was asking him, you know, what the heck? And he was saying that uh. You know, from the transportation side, there's obviously things that we don't consider. Necessarily in class, but he was saying that. Playing loud music, uh sending inappropriate texts. There's also this fact of video. Recording somebody, you know, without their permission. And I know that's. Probably just a free for all in, in the scheme of things, uh but his was a concern. On the buses. And that's. From a, a, an individual in, in, in an important aspect of our organization, we felt it was necessary. So that would be, and I understand the pluses and minuses. Of uh. Along bus rider sporting events. So. I don't know, maybe he could provide some information. I'm sure it gets kind of hairy on bus rides though. Other than long trips. I have written on a couple of bus rides and some there were. Good little saints and other ones are a little bit more reckless and depends on the route, depends on the age.
Yeah, oh, sorry Chuck, go ahead.
So he has his, his reasoning and I don't know if he could bring that before the board or just to get that input. Because to me, it's, I don't know, I could go, I could go either way.
Yeah, and I don't know that, you know, when I talked to Mike, I was asking, would this be doable for the bus drivers? It is, the answer is yes. We, we, just like we. We don't allow vaping on the bus was the example that he gave. Um, right now, some of the things that you mentioned are currently not allowed on buses, so they're already monitoring for those things. So. Again, it's something just, just to, just to think about. I don't really feel. Real strongly either way, but I can tell you now, if my kids are still in school, I'd probably. Take issue with it because they were all in athletics and, and they're, you know, just Sophia probably had some real late. Uh, meets where you're on a bus and it's nice to be able to do some things uh responsibly. Not the other things that you're talking about, but again, just something to consider.
So along those lines then, because in here, this particular draft of the policy, we have K through eight. School students are not allowed to use cell phones at any point in time during the day. So could that transfer over to bus use for them? And then high school students, if we're gonna trust them during transition periods and lunch. Then you'd think the same would go for buses as well, right? If that's their time. Like you said, you know, and they need to learn how to use electronic devices responsibly. They're part of the world, you know, they're not going anywhere. So. Could we, since they ride different buses, could that then be something where we have different expectations for high schoolers than we do for K through eight students?
I think I asked the question also is, what do you, when you talk about personal time. When the school day is over and they're on the bus on the way home and there's a parent saying, hey, I need you to. I need to let you to know that we're on our way home or we're doing this or hey, there's this thing that you need to be aware of. A lot of times. Parents will be texting their children after school day is over. Because something is up, hey, I need you to know that there's a change in the day. I'm not picking you up. You are taking the bus or you are. Not taking the bus. I am, you know, either, whatever it is, there's a change in whatever. I guess the other question is, we talk about personal electronic devices. What about kit, parents who have watches for their kids? So there's still texting abilities with that. There's tracking abilities as well, especially with kids who are in elementary school. Lots of kids have those. What does that look like, I guess? And so um, those are some of the things I think that I, I have questions about as well. And I don't know if that's probably more of a procedure question than a policy question. Because then we get into a lot of nuances and that's where our policies become a little bit more rigorous than our proceed, than our. Our procedures become more rigorous or more developed than our policies do. I do have a friend who, who works at the administrative office at Grandview School District. I did work there and uh, I did reach out to them and ask them how. It worked for them and they, and they're a parent of a high school or they have two students who graduated and a student who is still there and they're close friends of ours. And so I said, hey, do you think that this was effective for them? And they said, yes, big time. And they were very specific about phones and earpieces. Because earpieces, half the time, I feel like, I don't know about you guys, they, are they more like a statement piece of like, it's like. It's almost like earrings. It's like, hey, yeah, I have them in. I'm not listening to anything, but I got them in because I got them. I mean, is that realistic? But I think that it becomes a distraction because you don't know if the students are listening to you or they're just listening to music or whatever and they're tuning you out, but. They said that it really drastically reduced grade issues and it drastically reduced um. Discipline, student discipline issues. So I think it's something we need to address. I did see also that our WASD. The suggested workshops for this fall, when we, when it's in Spokane. Peninsula School District, I think, is on the list to talk about this very issue because they've kind of been. Had a lot of success with it and a lot of forefront. So I think that moving in that direction is the right thing. I think finding that right space is the hardest part, but. I appreciate you putting a lot of time into this.
So we had the uh. Gone through some reiterations with this. So. It's not the set policy, so we're not voting on the set policy. Would this be the? Not sure about the revisions, you know, we, or the, the first reading. This is the.
This is where we would approve it. We've already had a first reading.
So are we? Where were we, where are we at on this? Are we going to? postpone it or are we going to? Adopt it pending changes?
So um. You could take action as, as, as written. Any, and we could also come back like three months from now and talk about the cafeteria, talk about the buses. Or you could make, make an adjustment to this and consider adding buses in now, but as. But as written, it's just basically just says, hey, look, K eight students, no cell phones, we're not doing it. High school students, you're not doing it in the, the classrooms. You cannot access them, but during your time you can. I mean, that, at its. You know, peel the onion all the way back. That's all we're saying here. So if there's other things. More detail oriented things. I think Jeremiah mentioned that maybe procedurally, we can work on an administrative procedure to. You know, flesh some of those things out, but is there anything big missing from the policy at this point?
The big thing we really asked you to focus on from our last meeting for the policy was at allowing for, I think. To use the language that you used more broadly of student free time, especially for Sky Valley and the high school and, and allowing those, those administrative teams to, to, uh. To reflect maybe some of the needs there because of how long students have with their breaks in between classes at Sky Valley and Monroe High School. I think that was the big thing that we were saying. I think policy really needed to address. But as far as policy goes, we really haven't asked you to do. A whole lot more. This is really what we asked you to kind of look at, cause our last meeting was our second reading. Of this policy, we postponed it and tabled it until this meeting. So at this point, we're, we're set to, to do action. So the next step forward would say is if you, uh, is that we would make a motion either to approve or not to approve this policy. As it sits.
So my immediate concern is that this is putting the burden on the teachers. So we have students who will be using the phones in between classrooms, texting, messaging each other, get into the classroom and, you know, they're still. Enthralled with that device and teachers like, hey, put it away, put it away, put it away. And it's just. You know, first five minutes of every class is a teacher going around trying to make all the kids put their phones away. So then, you know, if we do a full ban, absolutely enforcing that in between the classrooms and the lunch will be nearly impossible. But, you know, kids are still gonna look at their phones, sneak away to the bathroom or whatnot. Um. I, I would like more kind of discussion and, and kind of brainstorming around that. Um, I mean. Being able to contact parents, I think that's a solvable problem. It's like, when you're standing in front of the office, you know, you can use your phone to text your parents or whatever, just allows you. Don't see you screwing around and playing games or whatever. It's, it could be a little loose there or something. Oh, there's, there's some, there's some solution there. I'm just really concerned about that, uh. The burden on the teachers.
Will. Go back. I was gonna read my little blurb that I've read for the last three times about the mental health aspect. To this, uh, that's kind of out put to the, put to the side, but the, uh. Uh, there was, should bring it up. There, there's inappropriate behavior. There's the mental health. There is, uh. Twenty, twenty minutes after you use a cell phone, your cognitive ability is not gonna get back in place. The, uh. The development of the, of the mind is affected in terms of its, its, its growth and it's also inequitable. For students, uh. Uh, social economic. There's also, uh, cheating on tests and there's also. Uh, people being filmed inappropriately, well, without their permission and then being, being posted. And it's also a, uh, one of the. I think fifty percent of all. harassment, intimidation and bullying hip is a result of cell phones. So I would actually. My own opinion would be a hundred percent ban. But in talking to some people at the high school. Being able to carry it out effectively. Would be enough, enough burden. And the other points that are brought up about it's being in our own free time and, uh. Being able to do what you want.
Chuck, I'd like you to adhere to our policy, please.
That's, you know, there's, there's an exception for an IED. And that's, I need to take my medicine. So shut up. So I'm, I'm accepted under this policy. There's somewhere in here that it's, you know, medical conditions. So, and I'm gonna have to delay taking my medicine cause I forgot it in the car. So. I'm anxious to get it passed, to get it on the books and that. A, a modification or a. A further alignment can be brought up at a future time and have a policy revision. So. I make a motion that. We accept. The policy revision thirty-two forty-five about students and telecommunications devices.
I'll second it.
There is a motion and a second to the Monroe School District Board of Directors, Board of Directors approves the revisions made to policy thirty-two forty-five, students and telecommunications devices. We do have to ask if there's more discussion, even though we already did it, just to follow procedures. Is there any more discussion?
I just wanna thank you, Sean, for going back to the, uh, administrators, you know, at the high school and really asking them what their opinion was on this. I mean, because that's part of it, right? Is the burden gonna be too much for them? You know, what is it that they truly think that they can do and hold to? And so, uh, even though I too would love to just see them gone, that's why my kids don't have them. I, you know, respect that and I wanna make sure that we're setting our. Our staff up for success, you know, with any policy that it is that we pass. So. Uh, I appreciate this and I'm, you know, there's always gotta be a little compromise in things and I appreciate. The dialogue over many days, just as a board and the people from the community who have spoken up, you know, and talked to us about it. I mean. That's what this is all about. We need the many voices to make sure that we're making the right decisions and passing the right policies. So. Uh, just a, a big thank you to everybody who took part in that to get us to this point and to this working policy.
And also we had the, uh, thought exchange. Thank you, Aaron, for that. We had nine hundred and forty-two responses. Teachers, community members and, uh, students. And from my standpoint, teachers win in terms of the distraction, uh, distraction and disruption in classes. Uh. Our primary mission, even though it might be stated differently in the strategic plan is to educate kids and that's first and foremost.
I think that's an important piece. That was one of the questions. Is it, do teachers think that they can enforce it? And that's what I wanted to go back to as well was the thought exchange with their overwhelming. With, they're, they're asking for us to do this to help them. And so if that's the case, then let's give them the, the policy that they need to be able to make that happen. And if we decide that it needs to be changed, I think that's it, over time that we can continue to do that, but this I think gives us a very. Doable beginning piece. And that was my biggest concern is I didn't wanna waste the time and energy that. Everybody had put into creating this, the research that you have done, the thought exchange, communication, to do something and create a document that really is worthless and not usable. And so I appreciate the time that you guys did that as well. That said, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes four two zero. Right. The big stuff is done. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right. There's a motion, a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes four two zero. Superintendent update. Superintendent Woodward.
We do this once a year because Holly will be mortified because she does not like to be singled out. But I, this is my twelfth year as superintendent, my third district. And the way that Holly takes care of this board and, and really just supports me every minute of every day. Um, does not go unnoticed. I wanna thank you so much. Um, very special employee, just top notch. So thank you, Holly, and I promise not to do that again. Yeah, that is very important. So, um, yeah, so a couple of other things, our free lunch program, I remember. That was a, a big issue last summer, my first board meeting. So. That's starting on Wednesday, goes through August twenty-sixth. So the whole summer essentially, they, they needed. A couple of days to do some cleaning of the kitchens and those kinds of things. Uh, so eleven thirty to twelve thirty, if you wanna visit that with me this summer, uh, that would be fantastic. And that's at Frank Wagner again. Uh, we will start the year with, uh, three transition to kindergarten programs. Hopefully that's okay to say, David. David, thank you for your leadership outstanding. Uh, both David and Joy and our communications team. So a year ago, we had one, we had two this year, three this year. So that just means more of our four-year-olds and young kids are being served. So, uh, great news there. Uh, the additional one will be at Chain Lake Elementary School. Um, and then of course they know, and I bet you James feels the same way. Uh, if we have more interest, we'll add more classrooms. So we're, we're open to that as, as well. So that's, I appreciate the, the, the teams work on that. And then, um. Erin shared some news with me that she was probably not wanting me to share here, but I, because I had to go into our office to find the certificate just now. But our communications team, as you know, that would be Erin and Tamara, they were recognized for their work by the National School Public Relations Association. Yeah, super cool. That, it's a national award. They give. Three levels of awards, award of excellence, award of merit, and then honorable mention. And then. Uh, our team got the award of excellence for. Both the annual report and the category of special purpose publication. And that's for the, uh, str- strategic plan layout and design, all, all of that. So congrats to our nationally recognized team. So pretty, pretty fantastic. Yeah, it's, yeah, it is. It's a group, very, very objective rubric that, that national organization uses. To even be in the running and then to get the top level award. That's, that's really good. So that's a good note to end on. And thank you for, um, your courage when it comes to the cell phone policy. It's, we're a unique district in the, in the state of Washington. So it'll be. Fantastic to start communicating this out. We have time. Uh, before we start school here in September to make sure our students and our families understand it and. And then we, we will be fleshing out the, um, the procedure. A lot, a lot of work, uh, to be done there as well. That's all I have.
All right.
Sorry, quick question. I'm, I'm, maybe I missed it. How many total people applied for the TK program?
Well, I, I don't know many people applied. Not all of them met the, uh, qualification standards, but we have roughly, I think. Fifty-five maybe or so that made it in. Yeah. So we, I, I don't know, we probably had at least eighty.
That's great news and thank you everybody for pushing hard on that program. So. It sounds like we are meeting the community's needs on this front, or at least the portion that heard about the program and applied for it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's awesome. Great job.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Woodward. I really appreciate that. And I think that also being proactive this year with the transition kindergarten program just helps our students. Launch so much better. I really enjoyed being able to visit the program at Frylands for our trend, or. So transition kindergarten program there, but I think just that alone, getting kids set up for success, but. Casting a wide net to get so many more kids ready for kindergartens is such a huge thing. And, um, appreciate that. Moving on, we have, uh, agenda item eight point zero one, as we finish off, uh, board reports. Anyone like to go first?
Okay, don't everybody jump at once. Uh, so graduation, I mean, the, the culmination of all of the hard work of all of our students through twelve plus years. Uh, of education and it's always a privilege and an honor to be able to take part and witness. Uh, and celebrate these students as they launch into the world, into whatever it is that comes next for them, whether that's higher education. Or directly into the job force or into the military, um, as is the case with some of our students. But I, every graduation is different and I love how our students are celebrated. So had. Just a terrific time at every graduation. Uh, Leaders in Learning, Monroe High School, Sky Valley and Transitions Program. Yeah, just truly a special time and I, I always loved doing it. So, but with that said, these. Graduations and these celebrations could not and would not be possible. Without all of the people that work so hard day in and day out to make this happen. So. I'm gonna take some time to just thank some people. Thank all of our para educators that work to come alongside and support our students. Thank our bus drivers who transport our students to school and home and to extracurricular activities and field trips safely. To our mechanics who help keep all of those buses and those vans running and in order for us. To all of the office staff at every single school for keeping things running, for. Uh, admitting volunteers and visitors to the school, all of the day-to-day stuff that that entails, all of our building leaders for leading. Um, selflessly and boldly in our schools. To oversee all of the, all of the operations that occur there, to all of our counselors for stepping in and walking alongside those students. Who need the extra help or just need an ear to listen to them, to all of our nurses for taking care of the students. Who are injured or just need a little bit extra attention with things that are going on. To all of our lunch room, lunchroom staff for keeping our students fed for both breakfast and lunch. Uh, to our tech department that deal with all of our Chromebooks and make sure that everything is running and online. Uh, we couldn't do it without you. To our custodians for cleaning our buildings. And making sure that our students and our staff have a clean and welcoming place to come into. To all of the district office staff that make it possible because all of the things that happened behind the scenes. Couldn't be done without everybody here at this building. To, uh, every single coach that has come out to walk alongside kids and support them through athletics. Um, and last but not very not least, every single one of our teachers that are in those classrooms every single day. Pouring themselves into our students to teach them all of the things that they are going to need to know to step out into the world. Um, a huge thank you to every single one of you because without you, none of this would be possible. And there are no small positions when it comes to the education of children. And also, we couldn't do it without our community partners, to every single business that partners with us, whether it's allowing kids to come in for internships. Or job experience or offering them jobs after graduation, a huge thank you to you. To every single person in the community who comes and volunteers in a classroom or just in our schools in general. Thank you because we could not do this without you. And to every single person who has ever donated. Any amount or any item to the school district to improve the education of children. Thank you because we could not have done it without you. So. Uh, in celebrating what has been, I just wanted to make sure that I took the time to thank all of you who have made it possible. You make Monroe School District what it is and it is an honor to be here and to get to do this year after year. Yeah, so I'm just filled with gratitude and, uh, yeah, I hope everybody has a good summer.
Dino. We worked on that list together, you know? No, I'm just kidding. Um, I just wanna say that to everyone involved in organizing and executing the graduations. They all went off, you know, perfectly, had a great time and so great job. And thank you for putting it on, putting all that on and for another excellent school year.
Well, we have some fun here during the school board meetings. Sometimes it's a bit rough and, uh, we have a lot of difficult decisions to make over the years. Uh, but it sure was fun at those school graduations, looking at the kids coming up. They're nervous, they're confident, they're smiling or they're just, uh. Unsure of the situation and just look them in the eye, shaking their hand and giving the certificate. It really. Is something that I really look forward to. It really makes a difference. In my role as a school director. It makes it all, makes it all worthwhile. And I'd also like to thank, uh, our, our employee. We have a good employee, works for us, cuts five employers. For the work that Sean has done over the last, the last year. I really appreciate that, all the work.
Sean, congratulations on surviving a year. With us, you have done an excellent job and we are extremely proud of you. We have excellent staff, you are surrounded by excellent staff, which. Thank you for honoring Holly as well, we love you Holly, you're awesome, you are so good at your job and. Obviously, things like the certificate of excellence with our communications team, yes, the strategic plan was. Not just. Well laid out, it was easy to read and that is a work of art to be able to have to put it that way. And so recognition that is well deserved, but. I think that it makes it easy to follow a leader who is humble and who is very. Go getter, who is ready to go out there and actually make those things happen and you work alongside the, the staff in doing that and we appreciate that. And I ask, I ask, how is Sean doing? I want to hear it, I want to hear the real deal. And the feedback that I've heard is that. You're the same person that we see in the board beaks. And, and I appreciate that, that transparency and working hard to figure it out. And that's not an easy thing to do when you have to make those decisions. So. I think as we continue, for me as a board director. We have come out of some pretty dark days that have been really difficult. And I think all of us questioning, what did we get ourselves into at different times? And for me, I think this last, especially this last semester of the school year has been very exciting. Because we come, especially at our meetings, we're getting things done and our one-on-one meetings as well, I feel like there's just so much momentum now. Now that the. The strategic plan isn't in the rearview mirror, but it's ready to be implemented and there was a lot of positive feedback behind that, there's a lot of positive feedback behind a lot of the changes that. Are moving forward and I feel like we're able to put a lot of the, the difficult situations that we had. Not everything is perfect or over, but there's a lot of momentum moving our community and our schools in a very positive direction. With student success, with where our students feel and, and again, there's a lot of bumps in the road to have to deal with, but. For the most part, I'm really excited about the days ahead for our school district. And I say that not just as a board director, but as a dad, I've got two kids in this district, one in the elementary and one in the high school and that's. That, you know, so we see it from that perspective, you know, I have a wife on the PTA, like we see all the things that are happening. And, and, and so to continue to, to work hard to make those things better and some of those are little tweaks along the way, it makes me really excited. I will say Sophia, the backflips, the first kid that was on your guys' left, he did ask permission. And I responded, can you land it? He's like, oh yeah, I go, well then, here you go. And so I think he, I think he had superintendent Woodward hold his cap, he's like, all right, all right, here we go. What did, what just happened here? I said yes. And then the other kid, I don't know, he was on the other side, I don't know if he said yes or no, or if he even asked, but I was really excited to see the students in graduation as well. I mean, it was just. I was able to attend three of the four graduations with leaders, the high school and, and Sky Valley and that was. I was at Sky Valley, wasn't able to go to Sky Valley and Transitions and it was just really powerful to see. Engagement, so many years of work for these kids, such a great moment and that is a great way to end. That year on and so for me, I was really excited. I did want to just say as an update, July is a wonky meeting or wonky month for us, we don't have two meetings, correct? We have one meeting on the fifteenth, yep, on the fifteenth. And so to mark our calendars for all of that and. That said, if there's no other items to be presented, this meeting is adjourned at six thirty-four PM.